All right, well, we're going to go ahead and get started now with the special Super Bowl edition of the Finance Economy Efficiency Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee. Thanks to everyone for being here. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting like we start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Noakowski, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as you can see, many of us are in Super Bowl attire. I'm not sure what the Vice Mayor's excuse is, but, you know, he's just-
God, we have some team that wears yellow.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure which-
Or gray.
Absolutely. So, the minutes of the December meeting were distributed to the members of the Subcommittee. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Move the minutes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Items three through six are for information only. Do we have any questions about items three through six?
No question.
All right, perfect. Thank you for those reports. Appreciate that information and the work that was done by staff on those. We have item seven is a consent item. Unless we have any questions on that item, I would entertain a motion. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We are a couple announcements here. First of all, item 12 has been withdrawn. And also, item, we're going to move item eight and item 11 back in the agenda. So, that takes us to item nine. I think we have Neil Young for item nine.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we're here today to talk a little bit about a change to the city charter that could assist in saving some money and really expediting cycle times and enhance payments to our vendors while still maintaining significant control over those disbursements. And, this is just a little bit of background. The city charter requires that disbursements are drawn on the treasury through the use of warrants. And we use warrants currently for everything except for payroll is the one thing that was excluded. And certainly, that language never contemplated the types of technologies that are available to us today. And so, we think there is an alternative that has an opportunity to save us some money. First, the city issues about 150,000 warrants annually worth about $2.3 billion. Those warrants that, those warrants have a lot of processing tied to them in addition to the hard cost tied to the warrant stock and the actual printing. Interestingly enough, no other city in Arizona has this requirement. And, many vendors only accept electronic payments, which requires additional workarounds to occur in the finance department in order to issue the warrant and make an electronic So, the benefits of revising the charter, really, there's a number of them. First, all of the electronic payments would require the same process and level of authorizations, but also provide us a better level of tracking and archiving. Also, the safety of the electronic transfer is actually better than that of warrants. Warrants, of course, and I think periodically in the city, warrants are counterfeited once in a while and things like that. That would eliminate those types of risks. In addition, we would provide much better customer service because we'd be able to pay our vendors faster and hopefully even allow us to take advantage of more discounts that vendors offer for prompt payment. And then finally, we estimate that about $250,000 a year would be cost avoided if we were able to make this change. And so, our recommendation would be to request this Subcommittee to recommend a council to revise the language for the next election, allowing the city to disperse funds without the issuance of a warrant. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. By the way, this is Denise Olson, Assistant Finance Director.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from my colleagues on this item? Now, this, this particular item was identified through the core review process, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Well, this is a great, appreciate you getting to this. Really kind of amazing and again, when you mention this too, that we're still doing this. And so, this is a wonderful savings, another great efficiency, and have the opportunity. Most likely, this would be the August ballot, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, if there aren't any questions from my colleagues, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved, seconded. Any discussion at all? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 10, the Economic Development Funding Plan. Ms. Mackey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we're here today just about one year ago. After one year ago, we met with the full city council, described strategy adjustments and additions for the city's economic development plan. And we're here today to walk through, one, more of the implementation steps and discuss with you how we believe we can go about funding economic development programs, and we believe in a way that does not diminish existing resources that the city currently relies upon. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Mackey to walk you through the details.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. As you'll remember, we presented to you at your 11-19 meeting, staff had come up with a, created a strategic economic development plan to really elevate Phoenix as a powerhouse in job creation and attraction in this market. As you'll recall, we brought forward a plan that really allowed us those opportunities and kind of laid out for you exactly how that would happen. And just as a reminder, those five pillars are up in front of you, which are invest in strategic land use planning and capital investment, pursue job creation, cultivate entrepreneurship, pursue redevelopment, and create a new marketing strategy for Phoenix. And as you've seen, of course, our new marketing strategy has now been created, and we're moving forward with, with getting that out into the market. We really do believe these five pillars will attract new employers to Phoenix in high-wage, high-impact job market, but also help our existing employers grow and thrive. As you recall, your November 19 staff proposed a draft framework to create a strategic academic development fund. We're back today with formal policy guidelines to present to this body for its recommendation to move on to the full city council to create a strategic academic development fund. This fund would be used to close funding gaps and to provide infrastructure to create those high-wage, high-impact, high-growth job opportunities, really to close the gap, not to entice companies to come, but all things being equal, how do we close that gap when a land site or a building might be a little bit lacking in a certain area? It's proposed to be capitalized from a funding source of projects that community and economic development brings into the market, ones that we have meaningful involvement in, not just drive by economic development, saying we worked on that, ones that without our involvement wouldn't have come into this market. We were proposing that that, those projects remain in the fund for a period of up to five years, and based on current activity levels, we think in the first year, we could see as much as $1 to $3 million placed into that fund. The Strategic Academic Development Fund would be based on annual city council appropriation through the CIP, and it really would focus only on one-time expenditures. Is it getting a water line to a certain area? Is it getting a road improved or a sidewalk? Used for job creation and make us more competitive against another market? Or really to help us focus on job training, to elevate our own workforce through that market? And again, it would be only projects that had true and meaningful involvement from economic development. It might be new speculative development that we bring into the market to get projects ready for a company to come into. It might be a project actually coming in, a build-to-suit of a company landing, or lease space coming out. It would be funded with a 50%, up to 50% of the general fund sales tax, and it would only be through non-restricted funds of the general fund sales tax. It would be paid in arrears, so only after the city had recouped the money from the Arizona Department of Revenue would the revenue be placed into the account. So, in arrears, it would be money that we had truly received. And as we talked about, up to five years for any given project. These would all be confirmed by budget that we had actually received that money into, and none of our specialty funds would be touched. To give you a kind of an idea, project for categories of inclusion that we've talked about would be new construction, an existing facility that's never been occupied, so we have quite a number of those around the city. And it would be existing facilities that have been vacant for six months prior to the current fiscal year. The reason we would do that is we wouldn't want budget to have counted on that money in the upcoming fiscal year, so we would cause them to, you know, we have a budget shortfall on what they would be looking for. The categories we would propose to include would be construction sales tax, utility sales tax, commercial, commercial lease tax, and telecommunications sales tax. Again, only for those new projects. Our recommended and initial investment priorities, we really do believe that investments in these categories can drive new development in these areas without additionally burdening the general fund. And as we've discussed, public infrastructure, land planning, job creation, job training, some funding for entrepreneurial and early-stage companies, additional marketing opportunities, and the potential of future academic development staff. We really do believe by creating the Strategic Academic Development Fund, we can help academic development reduce its existing burden on the general fund over a period of time as well. So, it really would allow us to work towards what we were able to bring in and wouldn't have come in without us. In order to become more competitive in this knowledge economy, Phoenix is going to have to be able to step up to compete with some of those more significant markets, the Austins, Dallas, Denver, San Francisco, those that are truly driving a knowledge-based job creation. Not only does it drive wealth into the economy, but it raises your educational attainment, which makes you even more attractive to those new companies coming in, really increasing our competitive position. So, with that, as you can see in front of you, staff would like to recommend that the Finance Efficiency Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee recommend city council approval for the creation of the Strategic Academic Development Fund to increase our competitive position in the marketplace. I'd love to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski.
First of all, thank you for these recommendations. I was just, some clarification. We've been working really close with Canada and Mexico in trying to bring some of those businesses to Phoenix. Would those individuals qualify under this program?
To the Chairman, Councilman Noakowski, absolutely they would. If they met those criteria that city council approved, they were new construction, new to market, or went into space that had been vacant for six months prior, absolutely they would meet those qualifications.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Noakowski, if someone's making, is bringing investment to Phoenix and creating new jobs, to us, if they come from Mexico, an existing company in Phoenix, someone elsewhere in the United States, or China, or Canada, it's all people who are making jobs in Phoenix. We obviously have a little bit of a, of a bent towards helping the, our existing business community grow, but where there are, where there are companies from Canada and Mexico who are creating good jobs, we should be supporting them in like manner with anybody else who's coming in to create jobs.
Mr. Chairman, I just really want to thank you all because it's really cleaning up all of those warehouse areas that we have that are sometimes abandoned for years, and sometimes we have these permanent, temporary fences around them, but they become permanent fences and become blighted areas within our communities. What a way to think outside the box and really attract businesses to the city of Phoenix and the opportunities to have our city grow. And I just really want to thank you for thinking forward and, and really creating these incentives for, for businesses to come to Phoenix. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Venezuela.
Just a comment. I want to, you know, commend our, our city staff in particular, Paul Blue and Chris Mackey. And I know that there's a big team, and you're both very humble, you're going to want to give all the credit to everyone else, but I really want to thank you for doing your diligence and just trying to improve our community by way of improving the economy. And they are relative, and, and so I appreciate everything you're doing. I especially appreciate that part of the focus is on entrepreneurs and the importance of, of supporting, you know, just our, that entrepreneurial space, something that we've been working on, that I've been working on personally also for, for three years. And, and to see this, you know, see that become one of the pillars, I shouldn't say that, to see, to see that highlighted, it's always been a pillar here at the city of Phoenix. Paul, you and I have talked, and there's been a great deal of work that has been done. But, you know, it's being highlighted as, as one of these pillars, and I think if you were to talk to some of our entrepreneurs, go to the members of Kahoots or Seatbot or whoever, I, I think they will see that, you know, I mean, they, there's a very good chance they have spoken with someone at the city of Phoenix, and it's most likely you, work with you to, to help improve what they're trying to do as well, which is bringing in some of these jobs. So, I, you know, can be more supportive, and I really do appreciate all the work that you continue to do.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor?
So, if somebody said, "This is a policy that's designed to pick favorites," how would you respond to that statement?
To the Chair, Vice Mayor Waring, I would disagree with that. And the reason I would disagree with that is, it really is, the favorite to us would be the city of Phoenix. So, these are buildings that have been standing vacant, they've had no revenue generated from them, they're doing no benefit to our citizens by housing jobs or capital investment. And we're creating an opportunity where those buildings, that the sum of revenue would have been zero, is now coming into the city and helping us create those jobs and advance those buildings and reduce our vacancy rates, so we can create more construction jobs, so people can build more buildings and more companies can come in. So, everyone that would move into that space would meet that eligibility, and I think that that would be what would be important moving into that fund.
Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, maybe I would add, is what we're investing in is either public infrastructure that we own, or we are investing in dominantly training of our citizens who would work at businesses within the city of Phoenix. And really, only after training has been accomplished would we be participating in the investment that a company makes in training. So, our goal as a company is not in a, in a direct way being enriched. We're trying to overcome the extraordinary expense of anybody starting a business, and our goal is, everybody that comes to us, we'd like, who creates jobs that are of a quality nature. And I think we will need to have future conversations with you in more detail about some of the criteria and come back through the Subcommittee in terms of, you know, some more specific information about choices we would make. If you're at 125% of the median income, if you're 200% of the median income, how, how do we work at that? And how do we participate? But broadly, we're trying to invest in our citizens or in assets that we own, not specifically in someone's individual company.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm sort of a little bit on the fence about this, but I am curious. So, you have your first million dollars or something, and you got the first three projects, but only one of them can get picked, or one location could get picked, or one, whatever it is we want to fix up can get picked. So, we are picking among those three. See what I'm saying? I mean, we are definitely taking public dollars and shifting them to one place and not another, which I know we, to some extent, do all the time, look at light rail, but, but still, I mean, somebody's going to bring this up, so.
And-
But when someone complains because we picked someone else's project over theirs, how are these determinations going to be made?
District seven has top priority.
Okay.
Which district is that again?
All of ours.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, while we are certainly trying to build up a body of resources each year that can be sustaining us often in, in the next year, a lot of how Chris and I think about these projects are, these projects out of their own activity generate income across a period of time. And so, while I, I won't sit here and promise you that in every situation, I know it will exactly work like this, or at least the theory of it is, if you relocate your business, you're producing a set of incomes that we don't currently have, and we're proposing to use those incomes to offset a near-term cost that is being, that, that operation is incurring, that is producing revenue. And so, we want to, if there is an appropriate rational way for us to participate that fits with inside those criteria I described to you, then these are self-funding their activity. You come invest in Phoenix, there's revenues that are produced, but oftentimes, those revenues occur in a very narrow window of time. And so, we're kind of advancing money, but our goal is, to the extent rationally possible, companies are self-producing income that generates the support we have for either any given location or individual job training or, or the other types of assistance. So, the goal is to have companies broadly self-funding what's going on, and if we have investment in their company, our goal would be to try to match up the contribution their project could make to the investment we might make.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Let's go to Noakowski.
So, the worst scenario would be is, if we picked a project, the project would belly up or belly under. We would still have the infrastructure and we would have the workforce development that we trained all these individuals in that. So, that's the investment that we get back in return, that in the future, somebody else can move in there because we have the infrastructure and we have all the amenities that we provide as the city of Phoenix that somebody would have to do anyways, right?
Mr. Chair, Councilman Noakowski, that's precisely why we're really focused on infrastructure and on job training, because those things don't later pick up and move to, you know, the, the next town, city, region, state. Broadly, our citizens will stay with us and will be a value to the community at large if the infrastructure clearly doesn't move. And any facilities would then be still positioned to be successful in supporting good outcomes in the community. So, yes.
But I do agree with the Vice Mayor when he says that, what happens when you're down to three individuals, you have to pick one, I think we need to really figure that process out still, and making sure it's fair and there's no favoritism being played. I agree with you 100%.
All fun and games, they pick someone who's not District seven, isn't it, Councilman?
And to the Chair, Councilman Noakowski, I think on the job training side, the important thing to note too is it's performance-based in arrears, so we wouldn't front them the money, and they say they would train, it would be after our workforce was trained that they would receive a funding.
So, ma'am.
Yes.
In this world, you know, there's a saying that you pick yourself, kind of thing. And so, there is a process, and if there is, you know, three, then we'll see who, who's the, who's the better fit is. But I really like the idea of a trained workforce and the infrastructure. When companies are looking to relocate, you know, many times, they are going to other places because it is more turnkey in other places, you know? They may, and there's some cities that are doing a good job with it. Austin is one of them, for an example. You know, Seattle is another one, for an example. And we have them right here in the valley, you know? And I get it, you know, we're not competing, and I agree, we're not competing with our neighbors here in Arizona or even in the country, you know? But, a regional, yeah, a, a regional win is a win for everyone, especially if it's in Phoenix, okay? That, so.
Like that.
So, look, if, if we can, if we can improve our infrastructure and, and the workforce, and, now, I got to tell you, we become more competitive to many of these companies, other industries who otherwise probably wouldn't look at Phoenix, or having in the past looked at, look at Phoenix. And now, you know, here's a real opportunity for them, and we can only win for that. So, I, I fully support it, and I, if, I'll make a mo, a motion to, to approve staff recommendation. I don't know if you want to keep the conversation, but.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I have a couple of questions. Could this potentially include retail, or is that, would that not be part of this?
Go ahead.
Chairman, yes, it could. If that met those guidelines and they needed infrastructure, let's use an example of a vacant big box that's been standing for years, vacant, and they're, they need a, a curb cut, they need a, a new lane pass-through, they need a new piece of sidewalk, a streetlight, something like that comes along, they absolutely could be eligible if they fit all the criteria that we need. And we'd look at that case as a revenue generating into Phoenix as opposed to the highway job creation, what we'd be looking at. We wouldn't be looking at the jobs, we'd be looking at the sales tax that would be coming in the Phoenix, not through the development agreement, but through the same guidelines that we looked at through the other process of, what's the benefit to the neighborhood? What's the benefit to Phoenix to participate in this manner?
One of the challenges in, in terms of retail, of course, is that you make sure you're not displacing sales tax collection from one part of Phoenix to another part of Phoenix, so that the net of Phoenix ends up being nothing. So, we got to be more careful, I think, with retail, but I wouldn't say that we should absolutely exclude retail. If there's a significant user that generates new retail to us that we have never experienced before, we should absolutely be open to that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest that a lot of these sites, and there are many of them through the community, and I know some that you have been working hard on, probably are never going to be retail again, but need to be adaptively reused to the next thing that contributes to the community. And so, I think there is opportunity to explore, because this was also, if, if everyone recalls, the reason we originally got after this and suggested this last year was, we had barriers to redevelopment, we had barriers to job creation that related to not having available sites that were, that were ready to go with infrastructure, and having a workforce that had a lower educational attainment than our competitors. And those are why we're here, not because we've concluded, gee, won't it be nice to get involved in this activity, but actually trying to solve problems where we are not successful in getting employment and redevelopment proximate to, you know, the convenience for our citizens or proximate to the neighborhoods that are affected by some of these vacancies. And so, we absolutely think there's opportunities to work in all of these. We want to continue to work with the Subcommittee on some of the more, you know, precise details of how we apply these funds, but we wanted to get your broad concurrence on an approach before we move much further.
Well, I'm, you know, very pleased to, to hear that vacant structures are going to be one of the areas we'll be looking at here, because I think for all of us, you know, we've struggled with that. Obviously, it's, it's well-known, the number of vacant structures within the city of Phoenix. So, that, that I think is very important, that that's added. And then, of course, this is something that we're pursuing in a post-city north world. So, anything that we do, as you've, you pointed out, it's going to be very targeted. It's going to be the infrastructure, which is something that the city has to invest in already, and then, of course, job training. So, as long as we, we continue that focus, I think that this is going to be a good investment. And also, too, to clarify, this does not impact property taxes in any way, right?
No.
No deferral of property tax?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Is there something wrong with the City North project?
No.
Oh, oh.
One of the Vice Mayor's most-
It's a shining light in-
Absolutely. District two. It's a big success.
Not without its controversy.
It's a big success now.
Big success now.
All right. Any other questions?
What district is that?
All of ours, I think.
All of ours, isn't it?
All right. With that, then, unless we have any questions or any other comments, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes by a three to one vote. Thank you very much. And we're going to jump back in the agenda now to item eight. And item eight is Super Bowl and NFL sustainability efforts. We have our Chief Sustainability Officer, Mark Hartman, with us today. Good afternoon, and he is going to introduce a special guest for us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Jack Crowe, the, for Environmental Program at the National Football League, and he's had great history of 21 Super Bowls, amazingly, and introducing sustainability into them, and we're going to hear about some of that today, as well as creating a legacy for us, a host community here for the Super Bowl. Thank you. So, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Mark. How are we doing today?
We're doing great. Welcome.
You guys are busy, and you're ready, you're ready for this, right?
Absolutely.
All right, it looks like it. I, I just want to fill you in on what we're doing in the sustainability end, and if you have a couple of questions about it, that's, that's, that's great, too. Obviously, we're rushing around right now, doing our final preps for this. We started, the NFL started about 22 years ago, doing sustainable pro- We started, the NFL started about 22 years ago, doing sustainable projects around Super Bowl. We started with a small recycling project in Atlanta, and now it's grown to be this enormous, a part of Super Bowl and of Pro Bowl. And I'll just tick off some of the, some of the elements of what we're doing here. And I should mention too, that we couldn't do this without all the partnerships that we form in the host community. First of all, is the Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee, which has been supportive and provided resources and helped make all this stuff that I'm going to describe to you. It wouldn't happen without them. And then, of course, we've got partnerships throughout the city. The city itself has been a great partner for the downtown events and for some of what we're trying to do there and waste reduction and other things. And I'm sure you guys are probably up on some of the things the city has been doing directly with, with Super Bowl. But, but here's what we are doing this year in, for this Super Bowl. Where our first project, of course, was solid waste recycling. And in 1993, when we started recycling at the Georgia Dome, there wasn't a recycling program at any sports facility in the entire United States. Nobody recycled a can or a bottle from a sports event, if you can believe that. And there's plenty of cans and bottles at every sports event. So we started it up then, and it took us several years to get it going. But now we've got a comprehensive program at all of our facilities, the stadium, the stadium campus, and all the downtown events. And of course, the city has, has been a real leader with us now in doing the Super Bowl Central event. The city agencies have cooperated with that and helped make that a real incredible reduced waste event. And we're hoping it'll be a real breakthrough for us, that we can carry forward into San Francisco and Houston and all the next Super Bowl cities, because I think we've, together have shown how this can be done in a downtown area. So we've got that piece of it. And then the food recovery part, and the interesting thing about being here in Arizona is that eight years ago, we partnered with an organization called Waste Knot, and they recovered food from the kitchens. This is food that never leaves the kitchens. It's not the food that's out on the tables anywhere. It's in the kitchen, it's cooked, it's ready to go, but never leaves the kitchen. You know, as I'm sure you know, that food can be recovered because it's not considered contaminated. And then it can go to shelters and soup kitchens and other, other places. But we worked with Waste Knot, and they set a Super Bowl record, which has never been equaled or broken, recovering 90,000 pounds of food from kitchens, from all these Super Bowl events. And just so folks know, when I talk about Super Bowl, not just talking about the game, talking about all those other events that are going on throughout the stadium campus and downtown here. So 45 tons of food that was recovered and was able to be fed to folks here in the Valley. So they're a great organization and we're very proud to work with them again this year. We started to look at our waste stream after we got those two projects going and saw that there was an awful lot of really good stuff that was thrown away after Super Bowl. Building materials, vinyl, fabric, fencing material, carpeting, just a lot of good usable stuff that ended up in the landfill. So ever since, I think 97 or 98, we started recovering that stuff. And we're working here now in, in Phoenix. We're working with Keep Phoenix Beautiful, with Salvation Army, with Treasures for Teachers, and also with Stardust Building Supply. And we're doing site visits now and identifying all the stuff that can be recaptured and reused. And then, starting next week, they'll pick up all that stuff and find reuses for it, all kinds of reuses. And we've already actually had some pickups right after Pro Bowl and recovered some interesting stuff that went to the Treasures for Teachers organization. So then we put together a program called Super Kids Super Sharing, which again, was a real landmark for us here eight years ago, even though it started 15 years ago. Eight years ago, it really ramped up when we were here in Phoenix. And I think we had somewhere, we had a couple of dozen schools that participated in it. Well, now, eight years later, we come back, we had 100 schools in the local area, 12 different school districts, 100 schools participate, and local kids collected their extra sports equipment, books, school supplies, and even used cell phones, and brought them all in, brought them into school, and then all the schools got together last Thursday and brought it to one facility, brought it down to Salvation Army Croc Center in South Phoenix. We had hoped to, our goal was, we hoped to collect about 10,000 items and then turn around and redistribute those to lower-income schools and to youth programs. By the end of the day, we had 33,000 items had walked in the door in the course of about an hour and a half. And these were all things that, you know, one kid says, I got an extra book, I got an extra pair of roller blades, I got this, and I'm willing to donate it to another kid somewhere in my neighborhood or my community. So we were just, we were blown away by how much generosity these kids had. We had about 400 or 500 kids who came down there, and the Cardinals came down and the cheerleaders came down, and Big Red came down, and we had a death cage match between Big Red and the, and Spike the Super Bowl. I won't tell you who won, but they're both still alive after the match. And so it was a tremendous project. All that stuff went out the same day, out to school districts that came down and were able to just pick through all the books and sports equipment and take what their kids needed. So then the last piece of the puzzle that we're doing here now is two things. It's what we call our climate change initiative, that we've tried to do to address the greenhouse gas and the climate change impact that Super Bowl has. And that consists of two things. Number one is renewable energy, which the stadium and the downtown events will all be using green power for the, for the full time that we're here in the community. So at the stadium, that means not just two days, but a couple of weeks of green energy. And we're doing that again through a partnership with SRP and APS. SRP out at the stadium, APS down here downtown. And they're working with us in the Host Committee to make that happen. And then the final piece, which was just one of the most exciting things we were able to do here in Phoenix, was we put together an urban forestry grant program, again, in partnership with the Host Committee, but also Verizon. One of our main sponsors came in, and they're the first sponsor that's decided to activate around sustainability issues at Super Bowl, excuse me. So they put up some cash for it too, and we did matching grants with four different cities. We actually sent it out to about seven or eight different cities in the, in the region here, but only four, you know, were able to take advantage of it. And then we did tree plantings over the last couple of months, and on, you know, Saturdays, we go out there and do the tree plants. We planted a couple of hundred trees, and we're going to continue planting trees after Super Bowl, right up through April, when we do our golden shovel handoff, we call it. We've been doing this about six or seven years. We have a little ceremonial shovel that has been at the Host Committee here for the entire year. The folks in New York sent it down here, and once we wiped all the frost and snow off it, the Host Committee here stashed it in a closet. So at the end of April, we'll do the final tree plantings here in Phoenix, and then we move over to San Francisco, do the first one there, and the folks here have to give up the golden shovel to the folks in San Francisco. And they've already warned me they're not going to give it up without a fight, but, but they, I'm sure they will give it up. So that's what we're doing down here. And as I mentioned, we can't do this stuff without the partnerships that we form. And we, what we did was, we formed partnerships with the city and with a lot of nonprofits who also had the same desire to make Super Bowl green, as green as they could. And so with, because of that participation, we've done, I think it's just been a banner year for us. So any, any questions about any of that stuff? I'm glad to chat with you about.
Well, Mr. Grove, thank you so much for coming in today.
Oh, you bet.
We are, of course, thrilled to have the Super Bowl here. Of course, that's been said many times, but we're also thrilled about the focus of the NFL and sustainability. It's really, I think, helping us, kind of pushing us and raising the bar for us as a community, which is great. But with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Councilman Valenzuela.
Just, just a comment. You know, look, thank you so much for being here and this is legacy stuff. This is what it's supposed to be and, and, you know, Councilman Gates, you know, there are a lot of us here who are focused on sustainability, but I think there's no, there's no question you have been a leader in pushing, I would even say the council, and certainly staff in this direction. And, and I, you know, it sounds like you are, you're getting a lot of green lights everywhere, working with staff and, and to, because we want to be more sustainable. And I think I'll take this opportunity to mention this right now, was, took a little bit of a walk through Super Bowl Central here. You know, we've all had an opportunity, I think, to take a few minutes and, and we noticed, city manager and I noticed, you know, just simply the message, the strong message that it sends by having all of the, the different bins out there for trash, recycling, and those kinds of things. Whether, you know, look, people will use them because they, we're making it really convenient, you're making it really convenient, but it really sends a really strong message. I mean, think of all the tourists that are coming down and they're saying, this is what Phoenix aspires to be, this is what Phoenix is all about, this is what the NFL is all about. On that note, I challenged the city manager to something called Barrow Brain Ball. Don't ever challenge Ed Zirker to anything with brain in it. I, you know, he won, came in, I came in second, close second, but, but there is a lot of fun, but, you know, along with that, the strong message of sustainability. So, good stuff.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman.
You know, I gotta give kudos to Bill here, because he was out there with a shovel in his hands when we did one of our first tree plantings. And that, that tree, you'll be happy to know that tree is still alive, Bill, despite our efforts.
That is, that is hard to believe, unlike some of the things I planted in my own yard. So that, that's good to hear. No, thank you so much for coming out. I think you came out to some of the other districts. I think you were up in District 2 as well. That was a great event. Everyone in Moon Valley was thrilled to have those trees added and really with that focus on urban, urban forestry. We appreciate it. Any other comments from my colleagues?
I will confess, I did not shovel at the event. I was dressed like this because I was going to another thing, so I guess we had to do a little bit of shoveling and then the rest kept going. But I'm proud of you for, for doing some manual labor, I really am.
They, they also serve who stand and watch.
I stood and watched mostly. I did a little bit of shoveling, but dressed like this, so, you know.
And you also mentioned SRP and APS for their involvement, renewable energy, both at Super Bowl Central and at the stadium. That's fantastic, and it's absolutely the, the direction that we're headed as a city and as a region. So we can't thank you enough, and just wondered, did you have any announcements today about the next time the NFL's coming back? I mean, if you want to break that here, you can do it here.
I'd tell you, if it was up to me, we'd be coming back here pretty often, because we, we love, we love working down here, and I think all the crews really like being out here. And especially after what we went through in New York and New Jersey with 20 degrees below zero. I got to tell you, this, this is gorgeous. We could be here every year, but unfortunately, it's not up.
I think it's worth a statement, every year, NFL, every year.
Absolutely. And this is on video, so thank you very, very, very much for that.
If it was up to you, you'd be making $44 million, like your boss. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go. Thank you, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
It's great to get a chance to chat with you about this.
Appreciate it. And we want to encourage everyone out there to go down and visit Super Bowl Central. It's open now, and it is, it's a lot of fun. Okay, so that takes us now on to item 13.
11.
Oh, okay.
3:00.
All right, I thought we were gonna, yeah, I think we're gonna go with 13, just because it's an action item, and then we'll, and then we'll end on 11. This is citywide data management technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the, one of the priorities of the council has been to get more into data-driven decision-making. This is one of the, the technology pieces that allow management efforts to happen. So while it is a technology piece, it's also the responsibility of every department in the city. So we have two of our strongest departments here in that regard. The Chief Information Officer, Debbie Cotton, and Public Works, which has been a leader in this with John Traheo. So with that, Paul or Debbie?
As Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we're here today to talk to you about what we believe are some important pieces of infrastructure that we wanted to discuss with you today that allow us to actually take our data and put it to work. And as the report described, we, we produce large quantities of data as an organization, some of which we, are very important to us to make decisions, but much of which is all contained in separate silos and different formats that are very difficult to use them in collaboration to drive decision-making, whether within a department or across departments. And so today, Debbie is going to walk you through what is a large data management tech, what is the technology and what does that mean. We'll talk about what some of the opportunities are, some of the assets we have, some of the needs we need to pursue. And then John Traheo is going to talk today about actual real-world, how we're using this. We don't use it a lot, but John is our poster child for a real-time, live use of this technology and how it has actually driven efficiency and effectiveness in the Public Works Department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Debbie to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for your time today. As Paul has said, I'm really just going to talk about the technical aspects of this, what we're calling this large data management technologies. You may have also heard to it called something like big data, business analytics, those are some of the words you're hearing in the marketplace. But we chose to use this phrasing just to try to bring it down to a human level so that it can be more easily understood and digested. I'm going to also do a little bit of defining about what this technology does for us, once again, just to put us all on a level playing field. Sometimes these concepts are a bit esoteric for people to understand, which is why we have our business partner here, John Chan, excuse me, John Traheo. I work with John Chan too, I work with all the Johns, so. So it's, it's important that we have one of our business partners who's actually implemented this, because the technology is great, but it really is the impact to our partners in business and how they can implement it that really is going to make the difference. So here is just a definition of what a large data management technologies can do, but I'm going to, as I said, break it down in a little bit more English. One of the words that they use here in this definition is applications. And just to level set everyone, an application is really a piece of software that a department uses in order to operate their business. Obviously, our departments use software programs, and within each department, those divisions also use software programs to manage different aspects of their business. And all of these software programs are creating and managing their own data. Obviously, the business that we're in is constituent services, servicing your citizens, servicing our employers, and that's what this data is all about, everything we do for our customers. And the reality of it is, is that it's, it's, it's in lots of places. It is challenging for us to be able to make data-driven decisions, much less real-time data-driven decisions. This isn't just our depiction of our traditional environment where we have data locked away in silos. As you can see, this is an illustration of our 24 departments. And in the front row of this schematic, what we are demonstrating to you here are, these are some of, just some, and I emphasize some, of the business systems used by just those departments, and those are just the ones that fit in that little picture. Each department probably has lots more. Now, I don't want us to think that this is a bad thing. This is not bad, because these applications were chosen for a specific reason, to solve a specific problem, to deliver a specific piece of service to the constituents. It's just that as the city has grown over time, our need for data has grown over time, our need to provide better services has grown over time, our systems, they have just grown and become sort of fragmented. So the whole idea behind these large data management technologies is to be able to move the data into an engineered environment where we can use the data in a seamless and well-organized fashion. Although it looks as though there is a lot going on, the city is not alone in the need for moving to these kinds of technologies. If we were a Fortune 500 company, we would have the same problem, we'd have the same opportunity. The reality, though, is that if we were a Fortune 500 company, we'd have cash and we would have done this 10 years ago. So that really, I just want to really kind of make that, we're not, we've not done anything bad, it's just that the virtue of where we are, and we have to fund more important aspects first. But this is not unusual, because if you were a corporation, you'd have various lines of business, you'd have to deliver those services to your paying customers. So what we're really talking about is moving away from multiple kinds of data sets to something that is more structured. And as we can see here on the top, we're moving from one world into another world. We're moving from multiple storage servers, multiple storage environments, into something that is a lot more simplistic. And that, that really is what large data management technologies are really about. I'm going to let John actually talk about what he has done with it, and then I'll be able to come back and talk to you about some of the immediate, some of the things we're doing today and some of the immediate needs and opportunities.
Thank you, Debbie, Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Again, Public Works, again, is, I think, is nationally taking the lead when it comes to data analytics and data intelligence. So there's a lot we're doing here, and it's, just as a reminder, again, we've been using data for a long time, but in a different format, and it's been very difficult at times to run reports and truly understand our business. And as you can see, and which it says on the screen, we do collect millions of data points on an annual basis, anywhere from our automatic vehicle systems, information at our scale house, just information on our employees, information on maintenance on our trucks. And we use that to measure our inefficiencies or efficiencies, determine program costs, minimize fee increase. minimize fee increases, we use that, and also to understand possible savings in our program. And we use data basically on a daily basis to make informed decisions. And that's how we operate on a, on a business. We also use it to verify compliance with not only city policies and codes, but state and federal codes as well. And we also use it, just how can we improve overall customer service? And just to give you an idea, we've been doing this for almost two years now. And these four areas that you see here, fleet, collections, transfer station, or landfill, within each one of these areas, the data was located in two to three different data warehouses. So we could, we could have anywhere from eight to 12 different data warehouses this data was collected in. And as you can see, it was very difficult to take that information and put it into one area to run a report that's needed. And so, and, and it, it is a good value to us and we use it to determine driver productivity, tonnage, outgoing tonnage, information on our landfill, our cost per mile, and, and other things. And just to give you an example of, of, of something that we use on a daily basis, and this is just a very high-level look at our data right now. This can be, this data here, as you can see in the very top, the green, the recycling and the refuse, that information, because of the data warehouse we have it in now, we could take that information and I can drill down to the route and to the map within that route, which is three maps within one route, and find out exactly what the tonnage was collected on each of those routes, which in turn, I can understand how much tons per resident on that route that I collect. And that's how I utilize to see how efficient we are on a per-resident basis and compare it to other routes within the city to see how well we're doing. And so as you can see, we, we use this, our foremen's use it in the field and we, to get a better understanding of what's going on. Here's another on, at, at the level, our field staff in the field, and this is real-time data. In the past, a lot of the data that we were able to use was usually a month old. This data you see here, we can get it within the same date. So this information, our foremen's can pull it up and they can pull data from our prior. And as you can see here, we use this data to get an understanding of, as an example, on the left-hand side or your right-hand side, you can see the early route lists. There's a city compliance and city code that we can't collect any earlier than six o'clock. If any of our trucks do collect earlier than six o'clock, we have an exception report that runs. And what we do is we go and talk to our drivers, you know, you need to understand, you can't collect before six o'clock. We also making sure that our drivers leave the yard at a certain time and they get from the yard to the route at a certain time. So they're not taking 20 miles, the long way to get to the route. We're making sure they're efficient, going straight from the yard to the route, as well as making sure they're running the route as efficiently as possible too. We also use this to make sure that they're in and out of the transfer station as soon as they can and everything else. And so we can drill down as, as, as much as we can on this and this is how we truly understand our operation, to get a good understanding of what's happening. Here's another information on our green organics program. And this is, this, this, what this chart tells us is, this is where we're being proactive. In the past, here's a good example where a resident called and they asked for a green container and we delivered the green container. And, oh, and/or they wanted it to go to a smaller container for less cost, as an example. We delivered the container, but yet they received a bill the prior month and they didn't get the rebate they were supposed to. What we do, and, and this chart will tell us on a daily basis, is that they received the cart, but they didn't get the rebate. So now we're being proactive. Instead of them calling us, we're changing it before they, we even get the call and before they even see the bill. So this is a good example of, of providing great customer service, which the customers don't even know to begin with. And in the past, we used to receive thousands and thousands of call on a monthly basis and we're slowly dwindling those calls down because, uh, this information that we're using.
John, John, could you explain for the council, that's a lot of really great things that you're able to do. I believe you would say before the application of this technology, it was, i-if not impossible, highly challenging absent a complaint to identify the issues and address them. Could you talk just a little bit about what the technology does to provide the solution?
Yeah, and then, and then that's a good point, Paul. In the past, it was very, and a lot of times it was very difficult to even determine. And a lot of times, we have in our code, depending on the codes, we'd go back three months or three years. And if we didn't identify it, sometimes they would either get it free or we would only be able to reduce their cost at that time. And, but with this system here, we're able to do it immediately prior to the way we did it in the past. And in the past, and a good point, we used to have 12 call center staff and we used to have four to five temporary staff in our call center. Now, we can do our call center with eight staff instead of what we had in the past because we've reduced those costs associated with this program. What, what I haven't really talked about here is the cost savings. And we're going through that process now, but we know we have saved money utilizing this program. And we know this program will continue to allow us to save more in the future and to better allow us to understand what, how we can make our business more efficient. We have been known to be innovative. We've done a lot of things in the past to be innovative, to reduce costs, but there's only so much we can do. And the data analysis part is, is what we're using to continue to evaluate that process. There's a lot of new programs we're gonna be bringing forward to subcommittee and for transparency. We want the public to know what, what, what we see, what they see. So they, at a good example, they can go onto the website and they can see approximately when the garbage truck will be at their home. A lot of times, residents sometimes don't know when we're gonna collect and they're calling us, "Have you been by? I, I forgot to put my container out. Is it okay to put it out?" Now they can just go on the website, they can see if we've been by or not. So that's a good example, again, of using technology and using this, this infrastructure to make us as efficient as we can and to provide better customer service. And again, it's about reducing miles and reducing miles reduces, you know, fuel and refuse, doing that helps reduce cost and keep our costs from increasing down into the future.
Thank you, John. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, this is just one example of the types of business-driven decisions and operational efficiencies this technology can provide the city, just because we have our information organized in a different way. We have the information, we've always had it, but it has been dispersed in silos. So just a couple of other opportunities and current needs that we want to make you aware of. The Water Services Department has a current need to continue a council-approved project to upgrade their customer care and billing system and Public Works also shares in that billing system as well. Uh, Public Transit has identified a need to use these technologies as well as aviation and planning and development. So I think you might notice a trend here that the enterprise departments have all noted a need and they have the current funding within their operating budgets. I, I think the other thing that might be important to note is that if we're able to move forward with these technologies under your guidance, we're, we'll be able to structure a deal where not only will our enterprise funds be able to use these, but our general fund departments as well for no cost because the enterprise funds are able to, uh, fund these, these items and without any, what, what people are concerned about, cost diversion. That's always a concern for our, our enterprise departments. So we, we're not diverting any funds. They're interested in these technologies and/or they have them now or need to expand them. Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, to, to that point, to, if, as you know, as you saw before on the chart, you saw those four data areas that we collect data on. There's other data in the city that we need access to, to continue to look at our cost associated with our program, whether it's, uh, finance, B and R, uh, PeopleSoft, other programs within the city that are located in other areas that's not part of this program. So for us to continue to evaluate our cost associated with our program, we would need access to that data moving forward as well.
Want me to continue? Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, some other information that might, would be of interest to you. Uh, within the next two years, the Information Technology Department will have to come up with a $2 million expenditure to replace some of our existing infrastructure. This is money, uh, that we, that we do not have, it has been, has not been budgeted. Uh, it's to replace some of our servers that are, will be at the end of life by the time the next two years roll around. Uh, we also would like for you to know that we have done our due diligence and we've been very efficient, cost-conscious, uh, because what we've done is we've looked at our existing technical environment and we are gonna be able to cash in software licenses. So we really have, uh, been able to find money within our existing, uh, systems that we use. A couple of other items for you to note, um, overall city costs to implement this system, not including the water department, is really gonna be $9.5 million over five years. And those funds will come from, as I said, our enterprise departments, uh, which would be aviation, public transit, planning and development. And then I had just mentioned the software licenses that we have in use that we will be able to reconfigure to use towards this new solution. And madam, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, um, that really concludes, um, our staff report and we're here to get your, uh, direction, uh, in terms of pursuing these potential investment systems.
Thank you. I think the Vice Mayor had a question.
So, so this is all non-general fund money?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, yes, this is all non-general fund money.
And that, the stuff that's not general fund is also important, but, but it helps with general fund stuff too, for lack of a better.
Yes, without question.
So there's definitely spill over there, which I, I got a briefing on this last week, so it's not fresh in my mind, but last week. So.
I, I do wanna be transparent and let me just, let me just state this. The $6 million that we are reconfiguring is general fund money, so I don't wanna say, but it's no new.
An increase in spending.
Correct, but I wanna be transparent.
Understand, thanks.
Okay.
So it's no increase in general fund spending, but we're getting benefits that should be a lead to efficiency saving.
Yes.
In our general fund operation.
Yes.
Is that a fair way of summarizing kind of what you laid out?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, members of the subcommittee, yes.
It seems like it's important, obviously, we've talked about this a lot at this committee, our sort of antiquated systems. This is pretty much cutting-edge, was the way it was explained to me. And it is what really innovative companies, big companies obviously, are doing.
Yes.
Is that a fair, also statement?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, I would just add to that. One of the things we've been trying to do and, and this subcommittee has been pushing us there, Innovation Efficiency Task Force pushing us there and Debbie's really helping move us there is, in the past.
Pushing so harsh, how about nudging?
Nudging. In the past, we have been good about viewing ourselves as individual businesses, the Public Works Department, the Water Department, the Aviation Department. What we need to do is to view ourselves as a large corporation with an enterprise system. And so rather than aviation buying a server and only using 25% of it, but it's theirs, and then Public Works buying a server and only using 35% of it because it's theirs, how about if the enterprise buys one server and uses 60% of it and then has the other 40% free for everybody else? And so that's how we're, to your point, leveraging the resources of our, uh, departments that have better cash flow that the whole enterprise can benefit from. And that's really what we're trying to do here and, and I think that's what you identified.
And I'm sorry for correcting you on the pushing. I, I've got four-year-old twins.
Nudging is good.
Spend a lot of my time at home saying, "Don't push."
Understand.
Now, I should add, they're not overly violent, it's just they're four-year-olds. They're twins, they're male, they push, it's what they do.
And, and, uh, Vice Mayor, we would never call you a nudge, so.
Are you suggesting, Vice Mayor, that your sons watch Channel 11? Are you concerned about?
I, I just don't wanna set a bad example. I don't wanna get into practice of telling one to push the other.
I know they're very precocious, but, you know.
They're not that excited about Channel 11. They haven't been used to seeing me on TV, but that's it.
Very nappied.
More critical than I.
Other, other questions and, and/or comments? Councilman Nowakowski.
And I just wanna comment that, um, this data modification is, um, something that's really important. It's basically centralizing all of our, our data and using all of our 24 different departments where we can actually get real time. And I think it's about time that the city of Phoenix, being the sixth-largest city in the country, that we start to communicate from our different departments and really see what resources we can use from each other. And I, I basically call it the Team Phoenix approach. And when it comes to fighting, uh, crime in neighborhoods or even cleaning up our neighborhoods, you see police officers, firefighters, you see our different departments joining in and, and it's really a team effort. And when we talk about technology, it should be the same way. And getting that real time where you can actually look up, I like that, with that example, John, is to see if the trash, um, truck passed or not, instead of getting that call all the time and then wasting, um, wasting time on just answering questions that other people could just actually use their smartphone or, or technology to find out. Um, one of the things I wanted to make sure is that we have no plans in raising any of our, um, city services, like our water bill or trash or any of that, to cover any of these costs in the near, in next year or so, right?
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, no, there are no plans, uh, to, to raise anything. Uh, just to be transparent, uh, the Water Department must make an expenditure on this system in order to upgrade their previously-approved project. And the enterprise funds, aviation, public transit and planning and development have put this money into their budget. So there will be no increase in fees to implement this new project.
I think it's a great idea. I'll be supporting it and, um, using real, real-time data and just giving the best customer service possible. Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Anything, uh, from Councilman Valenzuela?
I too will be supporting it. I think there's something, there's something there, I think, uh, that we're probably, we probably don't know, but there, there's money in there also with information. So again, talking about the entrepreneurial space and, and, uh, we're, we're doing something and, I'm not putting it on, I'm actually supporting and, and going and, and participating. Uh, Phoenix Union High School District is working with Kahoots on another code day, you know, bringing in all these, uh, high school kids, a good time and these kids are doing all this stuff with, with data. Uh, and, and, uh, I know that we've talked before about it, but this is, you know, there's information here, of course, secure information, some information is gonna be, you know, I don't want anyone to think that we're gonna release all of this, you know, very sensitive information that, say, HR would have or some, you know, this is not what we're talking about. But this is an opportunity for us to, to really, I think, work with many of our entrepreneurs to figure out, you know, what, what we have here, you know? And, and, um, so that's one of the byproducts of this whole thing. So I am, I am overall supportive.
Vice, Councilman Gates, uh, Chairman Gates, to that point, uh, Councilman Valenzuela and it, you know, I'm working with Debbie right now and because we have this system in place and some of our data's there, I'm working with Debbie, Debbie and her staff to do a hackathon sometime in April, May, some timeframe where we bring in these smart kids.
Right.
To figure out how to utilize the, the solid waste data we have and what can they do with it, whether using smartphones or a computer and, and it would be interesting to see what they come up with. So we're working through that process too.
Yeah, please let us, keep us in the, and Mayor Stanton and I have actually talked about this type of an event. So I, I think it'd be, you know, a home run, you bring in our youth.
Right.
And, um, see what we come up with. Have a good time.
Well, uh, I'm excited about this, this item. Uh, not only is it go, I mean, the, the applications are really limitless, um, like, like everyone has mentioned. I think the cost savings are, can be very significant and I, and I would hope that that would be something, there are obvious ones. First of all, we're just not gonna have the same number of servers and the people who are responsible for managing all those. So that's great. That's kind of the low-hanging fruit. And I really wanna see us push ourselves to use the data to, to save more money. And I guess that's one concern I would have is that we have this cool, sorry for using the term, but this toy, uh, to, to work with. And obviously, John, uh, has taken it and applied it. But what sort of, um, uh, assurances do we have as a council that every department is going to embrace this and utilize this to its, to its highest potential?
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the subcommittee, that, that's a great point and we'd like you to know that we will work with each department individually to analyze their needs and actually walk them through the process of how to do this. Uh, from given direction and guidance from our city manager, participation in this is not optional. We will work with everyone diligently. Uh, it does take obviously time and analysis because we wanna do it right the first time. But we'll be marching, I shouldn't say march, like, we shouldn't say push, we'll be nudging our way through the city and.
It's all right, I won't.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll be working with our partners in the city, uh, to make this happen. But thank you for that question.
Thank you. Oh, we do have, I apologize, Councilman Nowakowski, we have a card here from Brad Hoffman, uh, from Oracle in favor of it, wishes to speak only if necessary. Would you like to come and speak?
Yeah.
Come on down. Any questions, any questions from my colleagues? Okay, great. Again, Frida, if you'd like to, uh, address the committee.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will make one comment to the committee, and, and that is regarding your last question about how will we get this implemented and get it done. That will be handled largely by my team. And, and, you know, we partnered with John on the first iteration of this, and, you know, when it first went up to council, we made a lot of promises about, you know, training at no cost, parachuting in engineers when things aren't going well, and we met all of those commitments, and we look forward to continuing that partnership.
Wonderful.
Can I, I had a briefing about this last week, so we're getting a next-generation type of thing, right? It was from the original agreement?
That's right. In fact, we actually had to hold some pricing for you because during the process of developing the architecture for this, the very latest model was just released, and that is what is going to be shipped.
But we're paying for the previous model.
That's correct.
Great. Anything else, yes, Councilman Noakowski?
I'd like to make a motion to go with staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep, second.
Second from Councilman Valenzuela. Any discussion, further discussion? Just one question, in case anyone's wondering out there watching, so there, there would not be an RFP associated with this, and if you can explain why?
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, that is correct, because as the city manager has said, we are leveraging an existing investment on, on city council-approved projects, one being the project that John has currently implemented, the pilot, and the second being the customer care and billing system being implemented by the Water Services Department. So we're just going to leverage what we have. Those items have been approved by this body and your colleagues at the full council.
Councilman Noakowski.
And Debbie, just to add to that, I mean, the pilot program has been a great success. I mean, we've been seeing on both sides, customer service and savings for the city of Phoenix, and I believe that's what pilot programs are all about, is see, to test the, the product out, and we tested it, it, it's above what we ever thought it was going to be, so I really want to thank you for providing a great product, and we're even going to get an upgrade now, so thank you.
Okay, perfect. Well, unless we have any other comments or questions, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we may be, I think we may be losing, Councilman Valenzuela, he has another commitment, but our last item is a, for information only, this one will be going through some of our other subcommittees for action, item 11, street landscape maintenance.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned about an earlier item, appropriately so that it was a, an item from our core, from our internal review process. This one has, did get a lot of impetus from Core. It's something actually we've been working on for a while with the --
City Manager, if I could just recognize that, we have Claude Maddox that was in the room with us, our ex-council member, so thank you, Claude, for coming.
Thank you.
And he's actually wearing a tie now. I like the look.
D5 staff felt I needed to brighten my work relationship, adjusted I, thanks.
And Councilman Maddox, if you haven't been over there already, try and check out Super Bowl Central on the way out.
I had a meeting over there this morning, I don't want to go anywhere near it.
He's saying that he's not going to go there, but we would encourage him to do that. Okay, back to the item. Thank you very much, Councilman.
This item is really trying to, to deal with the issue of, in a time of diminishing resources and diminishing staff, how do we maintain appropriate service to the community? And it's really, again, through Core, was wrestled with by this group of folks, our Innovation Efficiency Task Force with, Chris Hallid as the chair, and Richard Ray is one of the members is here, but this group's really been wrestling with this for a while, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Lisa Tocata.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the subcommittee. As Ed mentioned, this was a, an issue that was identified during the Core review by two of our city departments, the Parks Department and the Streets Department. We have been actively engaged in discussion since that time to figure out if there are some alternative ways of delivering the service that can bring better results to the city. The item is scheduled for the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee for Action in the very near future, but we wanted to bring this to you today and get your input. We have today Jim Burke, our Parks Director, Ray Deovalena, our Street Transportation Director, and Deputy City Manager Rick Neymar to provide some more details for you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'll start and then pass it off to Ray. So as we looked at it in Core, we came to the understanding that we've been doing street landscaping by two different departments for a very long time. Parks took over maintaining street landscaping in the 1960s, but the Streets Transportation Department has been designing the landscaping along with their major capital projects, the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and the roadway surfaces for, forever. In 2009, we also took it to the council, the council, the work group session, and they directed us to make sure we outsourced any new contract maintenance. So we have it split in two different departments, and Parks Department's maintaining the major arterial streets, the residential backup along the major arterial streets only. We're not doing the commercial properties or industrial properties or others. What we basically do is eliminate the visual obstructions, that helps raise streets' operate function as they're designed. We also prune the plants, take care of the irrigation system, fertilize the stake and remove trash. And as I mentioned, we do not take care of the commercial properties or anything that's maintained by an HOA. As a graphic for you to understand, there's 755 miles of major streets in the city of Phoenix. That's both sides of the street and, in some cases, the median island. That's like maintaining a roadway from here to San Francisco and back, which you can imagine with FTE of 21 people, that's a pretty challenging item. We're now at the point where we're basically a complaint-driven response, we're not getting out and covering these on a regular basis, which is why your offices are probably getting lots and lots of phone calls. And this is just a chart to kind of give you an idea that, over the last 12 years, the acreages increased dramatically from under 500 total acres in that 755 miles to 657 acres, but our FTEs have dropped to approximately 21 right now, so it's a major challenge for us to do this and keep the service level anywhere near acceptable for the community, for the council, and for our own pride of service. And with that, I'll ask Ray to carry on.
Thank you, Jim. So some of the aspects of what the street transportation does is we play a major role, not in addition to what we've done post-2009, we play a major role in the regional freeway system that we have. So we, in coordination with ADAT, we have about 80 miles of landscaping along the freeway. So we work with ADAT and partner with them to not only maintain, operate, and also the irrigation aspect of, of the landscaping. In addition to that, so kind of coming to the street network, we also have close to 80 miles of unimproved streets out there, and we also tackle that with our street maintenance folks. So as Jim mentioned, we have an assortment of different new projects that, since 2009, that we take care of, both from the contracting side for maintenance and litter pickup and also the irrigation. And with reductions of, of costs and the general funded aspects, we've kind of reduced some of those, some of those components that help support this. So we're looking at always trying to be more efficient and be more, more careful in how we're dealing with our current contracts. And as I, one of the things that happens with the unimproved right-of-way is that it's complaint-driven, as, as some of the things that Jim had mentioned with regards to their aspects. Moving forward with some of the challenges that we have with just landscaping and maintenance of the street network, the, the life of a tree is not, not a lot of years, so there's always an issue with trying to replant and maintain that, that infrastructure that's out there. There's also damages when we have storms, when we have crashes, things like that. In the right-of-way, we have, we try to make sure that we can recoup that infrastructure back with the, with the street network. And as well, we have so many different controllers, so many different apparatuses, things that help sustain the, the infrastructure that we have out there with the, with the landscaping. So some of the examples that we look at with a complaint-driven, this is one example, that we would go out and, and basically pick up the trash, working with parks, we would, they would go out and, by complaint-driven, tackle this area and clean it up, and, and basically take out of some of the brush areas that we have there. So that's one example. Another example of unimproved right-of-way, this is an example that, you know, if we get calls, we'll have our street maintenance folks go out and, and clear the brush there and, and pick up any trash, but again, it's a complaint-driven type of situation. Some of the examples of, of weekly service, and, and some of these could be through, through the commercial developments, through some of the HOAs, this is an example of how weekly maintenance of the landscaping and within the right-of-way looks like. So as Ed mentioned, through the Core process, we identified some of the core missions with regards to Parks Department and Street Transportation Department, and looking at what are the main activities that each department should be looking at, we, we looked at basically the, the following options. If Parks was to deal with just parks, facilities, and street transportation to deal with infrastructure within the, the right-of-way. So the first option is basically no change. It's, we keep it the same way it is right now, it's complaint-driven service, level of service. Budgeted right now is about $1.2 million. There's 21 full-time employees in that budget. Again, that would be just a, no change in, in the service that we have right now. The second option would be to look at a procurement process where we would take the funding that we have for those positions and do a contract level of service and do an invitation for bids. We not only would need to have some contract monitoring and inspections, that's the $350,000 for city resources, we would deduct that from that 1.2, and then the remaining funding we would look at trying to do a procurement process and trying to get a contractor on board. And we're estimating that, based on that funding, we would look at a three times per year plus complaint-response-driven level of service. Again, that, this is based on the market of --
And Ray, in that option number two, what happens to the 21 FTEs that are mentioned above?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, those are currently vacant positions I've been holding in the Parks Department since the Core review this past summer. So we would shift all the budgetary resources to Ray's department, allowing him to outsource it, and then those vacancies would just go away and no longer be FTEs within the system.
And just to add one thing, those people that were in those positions are now maintaining parks. And so one good thing is Jim gets to improve his filled position ratio in those, in those positions where parks are, are being maintained, so you're probably seeing better results at the parks themselves, which is their core mission.
So moving along with the, the following third option and fourth option is just increasing the level of service, and then these are just options that we're present, we're going to be moving forward to, to the next subcommittee, the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee. Again, you can see the, the prices, it's all based on what the level of service would be and the increases of cost. And again, these are estimated costs, we're using an estimated per, per acre, per, per area, just to come up with something that we can at least define what, what we think should, would be the level of service based on these options. So this is, as Lisa mentioned, we're going to be moving to the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee next month for, for a recommendation for this aspect.
Okay, thanks for, oh. Thank you for the presentation. We have a card here, maybe we can take that and then see if my colleagues have any comments. Louis Schmidt, come on down.
Thank you, Chairman Gates, members of the committee. As I look at this, there's 21 positions that are held vacant, and we want to increase the service level, so a possible solution is to possibly contract this out. One thing that the city has pride of itself in is hiring people from within the community. The more and more you guys keep contracting out these entry-level jobs, the more and more people from our own community can't come to the city and have a future in the city and to go anywhere. Unfortunately, the direction of the city council is, is what it has caused, in the direction of the budgets, there's a lack of revenue, there's a lack of, there's a resistance on the council of looking for revenue options to, you know, to bring revenue into the city. And because of that, we keep going after budget shortfall after budget shortfall, now we're going on almost six years of concessions. And because of the budget shortfall, we keep having to, you know, we won't let these departments fill these critical positions, and now we're, you know, you can see the street landscaping suffering, and this is just, I know there's no action today, but at what point are we going to stop? I mean, last, last week on the city council, I believe it was item number 40, it was for same type of landscaping stuff for the Water Services Department, and there, you got, it was for a change order. So the original contract, the price that you guys were given was about $100,000, maybe $240,000, and now it's up to $600-something thousand. And that's what happens when you guys, when you put the, when you put these bids out in the street, you're going to get a low price at the beginning, and then you're going to get change order after change order after change order, and what happens over and over is the city council just approves them because there's no, there's no criteria set forward to whether or not this can be in-sourced, there's, there's really no criteria there. But it's frustrating for me, because I've said it before, talking to you and talking to the city council at the, at the meetings over there, about looking for, you know, about, there has to be a better process in place. Again, we've cut so many positions, you know, I think, what, what's, the question here is, is it 21 people that we're covering the street landscaping citywide? Is that what the, what it is? I don't, it, it is, right? So someone's still doing it now, someone is doing that work now, but if you look at what our staffing levels were five or even more than five years ago, look at that, and you'll see that there was proper coverage, but because of the council direction and the budget direction, this is what has led us today. So, you know, option number one, just leave it as is. Option number two, doesn't save you any money. Option number three was to, you don't, you don't have the money for that. So we, I caution you, these jobs are not in my unit, of course, but what I'm telling you is that you're restricting the public. Pretty soon, you know, you know, John Doe from the streets won't be able to come to the city, and that's a sad thing, because the city prides itself of being a family-oriented employer, but you've cut, you're, you're cutting and cutting. Not everybody can, can come in at an executive level or with degrees, you know? We're going to, one of these days, it's going to, you know, hopefully not in your, in our lifetime, but the city is going to become a place where, you know, it, it restricts a segment of our population from coming here, so I know there's no action today, but I just, I'm, it's like, I'm, I sound like a broken record, talking to the, you know, talking to the, you know, the city and to the council about cautioning which direction we're going in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, though, too, I think what Mr. Burke said was, he has 21 positions in landscaping elsewhere in the Parks Department that have been held vacant, not that there are 21 vacant positions in street landscaping, so what would, would happen were the council to approve this is, the street landscaping staff would move to positions within parks, maintaining parks.
So presumably, we'd have better service than on our parks. Our parks would look better.
Our parks would look better, and this service would go from complaint-only, under the current situation, to they estimate three times a year of maintenance plus complaint basis.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to address two other things. Mr. Schmidt mentioned that he doesn't represent the folks that, that do this work. We did meet, I want to make sure you understand that we did meet several times with the unit representatives and the steward in the Parks Department, and had very good dialogue about this, and they understand why it is we're doing this. Nobody likes to cut city positions, but they understand that there's an opportunity, perhaps, to increase the service level without increasing the cost. And our employees don't like doing this work that's not their prime work when they can't be funded at a level where they can really do a great job of it, and they're doing their very best, they, they love their work, but it's really hard at the funding levels we're at to, to, to do things the way they used to do them, and I, and I, I think honestly, if you ask most of the employees, their preference is to be working in the parks instead of working out in the medians. And Jim, I don't know if you want to comment on that in addition, but, and the other thing I want to mention is, Mr. Schmidt brought up change orders, and, and the unit talked to us a little bit about change orders, too. When we contract something out, we do it for a particular time period, and then often we have an option to extend that contract for another year or two years, or sometimes we're in the rebidding process and it gets delayed, and we have to make a change order, and sometimes the scope of the project changes as well, so maybe we have more miles of landscaping or whatever it is than we used to have. So those change orders, in most cases, are not increases in cost from what the company committed at the time, but rather changes in scope or timeframe or whatever. And I'm happy to address at any point any specific concerns about specific change orders, but generally, that is the case. When somebody bids on a, a contract for us, we hold them to the terms of the contract, and I just want to make sure that's clear for you all and for the public listening. Okay. Unless there's anything else, this is not for action, so thanks for the presentation, and thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your comments as well. We are now being provided with the future agenda items. We have several items here upcoming. Anything else, Vice Mayor, such as you and me, that, that we ought to add on here? Okay, great. And I do not believe we have called to the public, so thank you very much for joining us today. Meeting is adjourned.